Lord. Mr. Weatherwicks, would you please pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brother Ed, would you give your confession?
Lord, we just come to you today, we thank you for your grace and mercy, your help and your strength. We're especially thankful there, Lord, for the way that you work in our lives. I know that many on this council, Lord, have had illnesses and sicknesses and going through difficult times. And they're better. I do pray, Lord, for Bill right now. We ask, Lord, that you bring him to full recovery and full health. We thank you, Lord, that we can turn to you and trust in your goodness. We pray to you, Lord, for this council. We pray that you would give them the wisdom that they need as they represent the people in this community. I pray to your Father that you would bless each one in this community. I pray you protect. I thank you, dear God, for our firefighters. I thank you for our police officers and other public servants. God, we thank you for the way they do things and the timely fashion they do them. We thank you, we pray, Lord, that you continue to protect them also as they do their work. We thank you for all these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
In your package you have the minutes from September 2nd, 2014. There are motions approved.
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second, and changes or corrections. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. In your packet, you have the city's abstract for August 2014. You want to entertain a motion to approve it?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Also, do you get approval for the city lot, gas, and water, the abstract for August 2014?
Motion, second.
Motion, second. Y'all two getting warm out over there. Ball. All right. Questions? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Move on into business. I would ask the council to consider appointment of Hampton Deck and also David Wilkins to the airport board. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you. I would also ask that Ms. Freddie Graham would be appointed to the Kennet housing authority board. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. It's gone too smooth. I'm probably something.
Do we have two separate minutes? Did you leave it for both of the minutes?
I knew you had that cake in there.
I'm sorry.
Do we have?
September 2nd and September 1st.
Oh, that's right. We had the short meeting. Sorry about that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there a motion approved? The special call meeting on the 9th of September?
Motion, second.
And with second? Changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. We have an ordinance, signing of MoDOT municipal agreement.
And this is the agreement with MoDOT for the improvements to Highway 412, to the highway 412 and the roundabout. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the city of Kennet, Missouri, and the city clerk to attest thereto an agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the city of Kennet, Missouri, for improvements to US Highway 412 in the city of Kennet.
Stand up.
Darn.
I just wanted to be clear.
Motion is second. What clues he has? Discussion? All in favor, say aye to the reading?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Thank you.
Second reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the city of Kennet, Missouri, and the city clerk to attest thereto an agreement between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the city of Kennet, Missouri, for improvements to US Highway 412 in the city of Kennet.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. And this will be a roll call, though. We have to have discussion first. Anybody got any questions or discussion? Pretty much all similar, no right-of-way changes or?
No, there's no right-of-way changes. This is just a review, which obviously allows them to use our right-of-way and just for this MoDOT to make some improvements.
This ordinance vote, we'll need to have a roll call.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
That passes. Thank you very much. All right. We have a century league, century tail settlement that we'll need to approve.
Actually, we'll have to, an ordinance probably at the next meeting to approve it. We have to approve it prior to, I think, November the 5th. And you have the information in your packet. This is another part of the mobile phone or the cellphone settlements. Another part of the class action suits John Bowles has been involved in. And this latest settlement, I believe, around $8 million total. The portion of the city of Kennet is a little over $8,800. All the information's in there. We'll have an ordinance up the next meeting to approve this settlement.
Will the ordinance approve the 5% commitment to municipal league?
That's up to the council.
We'll have to come out of separate votes or not?
We can do it all in one ordinance. But, I mean, what? And I can prepare the ordinance either way. But what we've done in the past, since really all of this was started by the municipal league, is we have in the past donated 5% to the municipal league. Certainly, it's nothing that's mandatory, but it's something that we have done in the past, really. And what the municipal league uses for advocacy fund that they have, that they use for lobbying purposes for cities and for litigation involving concerns of cities.
I just noticed that at home, when I hear you do this, I notice that.
There is provision that we can do that if it's what the city wants. We have done that in the past, as you recall, with the AT&T settlement, which was a lot more sizable settlement. We did that, I think, on the Verizon. I think on all the settlements we've had, because it really was the municipal league that initiated and initially supported these class actions, which has not only taught us pretty good money in the past in the form of back taxes, but continues to give us money in the form of taxes on cellular.
I just know they do a lot for the communities of this faith.
They do.
Well, official person.
Yeah. And again, it goes into an advocacy fund that they have that it seems like they have to tap it more and more every year because of the more increased lobbying activities they have to do. And there's a lot more litigation than there used to be, that is very expensive. So I'll have an ordinance at the next meeting.
Can, will it complicate the ordinance by adding that in the ordinance?
Not in the least. No, it's very, that's just another couple of lines.
Anybody have any opposition to it?
No.
It's what we've done in the past.
It is.
Okay. We'll move on to the item F, the ordinance.
No, we'll table that.
We need to update our bank signature cards. In order to do that, we need to perform a council. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
To do such?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is Rick's mail on that?
I don't want my thing. Leave me out of this.
If it is, scratch it off.
I was just getting even for some remarks he made this morning.
Do we have a motion?
I do.
Second. Okay. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. I think the discussion of trash removal, I'd like to table that. We're gonna have a little discussion after the meeting, with the open meeting afterward. So we'll have some more discussion regarding this. And also, the letter "I," we'll go with that also. Unless anybody has any input. We'll move into unfinished business. The walking trail, Randy's not here this evening, but discussion of bidding, summer mowing. It doesn't necessarily relate to mowing, but in your packet, I've asked the clerk to include a piece of paper. At the top of the item, it says vegetation crew bid in bold print. And just a quick summary of it, purpose, trimming, removal, vegetation, group on streets, alleys, sidewalks, any other means transportation within the city. I'm asking that the funding will come from the transportation tax, regardless of how we do it. Timeframe would be starting as soon as possible, continued until it's done. What I'm asking for here is the council's approval, me, to advertise this bid, just to get pricing, and then we can explore all of our alternatives, whether doing it in-house or by bid. Just merely asking for this to be advertised, and that way we have a good option available to the council to make a decision.
If we could do it, I mean, I would just soon, you know, try to contract it out because, you know, the street department has been doing their jobs on a routine basis. They, you know, driving down the street and seeing the two-foot weed growing out of crack, or they spray it with Roundup, now I got a two-foot brown weed, you know.
I wouldn't use those down.
So anyway, so.
I agree with you. I agree. I think you get more work out of that.
Yeah.
You know, if it rains, they don't get paid for, they get paid for working, the contractor does, so.
Yeah.
But I've heard several complaints, and there's some safety factors from trees growing up over the stop signs. I feel like we need to address this. It is a fundable item through transportation sales tax, so that can be funded, if that means.
Do we have a definitive plan for those people to bid, bid towards, to bid on?
What I'd like to do is an hourly contract, and under the direction of Randy Carter. But they report in a certain time, on certain days, and then he gives them the direction of where he needs to go and keep it going.
Yeah. Because each time might be different. If there's no weeds growing around Court Square, they probably don't need to go there.
Yeah. It's just gonna be, a lot of this will be mainly the woody vegetation, a lot of that would be.
Okay. I like it.
And sidewalks, alleys. We've all heard complaints about the alleys growing up. We sent it through there. I would think this is gonna be our best solution, but I won't make the options available to the council.
Can I just ask that the incentive be changed to two people? Because this is something that doesn't necessarily have to be men.
No, it's just wording out, carried off from my free business. It's always been two men. Too manpower, you know. It can be two people.
When it's advertised or whatever, just make sure that it's just two women.
Two persons.
Whatever, if that's what you want.
Two persons on it, so. Anything else? Anybody see anything else wrong with this?
Why do we get upset about those evergreen bushes? I've got some of those at home, and I was black. Easy to take care of.
Is there a motion for me to advertise this bid?
Motion.
Motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There's official. Hey. In my report, I would like to also bring to your attention the other piece of paper I've included. The clerk's included in there, emergency abatement property. As you can see, the recent reports, properties in need for immediate abatement. I made sure health and safety hazards to surrounding neighborhoods. Health and safety concerns are created from the permanent risk of injury and/or death by unstable structures. I'm asking the funding to come from industrial reserve account that currently stands at $128,295. The amount requesting is up to $50,000. It may not be the full amount for this emergency abatement, but then the rest of structures that's not a risk to our neighborhoods and our people will go through the normal process. Again, this timeframe will be as soon as possible. Including the plan, I've included funding for the following. It's the use of rental equipment, plus the $3,000 per month for the equipment. The travel, most of the travel can be tracked, machines can be tracked within the neighborhood. Any long-distance travel, be $75 per move. I've managed to get disposal dumpsters, dumpsters, a full, large one, I think they're 30 yards, for reduced rate. You can see it on your paper here. Plan of action would be, I'd like to place some signage on the property, inform the neighborhood of what's about to be carted to the property, removal of all utility connections. Most of the electric lines are removed, but the waters, the gas, all signs need to be cut, so it won't damage the infrastructure. Schedule dumpsters for the removal company. Schedule appropriate manpower from all city departments that might be needed on the job. Don't mean we're using everyone, just using certain people from different departments that's most experienced in the operation. Attain the equipment. All the house debris will go in the dumpster. All vegetation will be hauled to our compost facility to keep the cost down. Final project will be an open grass lot with only the very large trees remaining. This allow, if we have to go back next summer and mow the lot because it's still not being maintained, this allow easy mowing and bush hogging and not weeding in areas. And hopefully get the cost assigned to the property, whether that gets paid or we give it the property to the neighbors that may take care of the property, whatever may happen. But all I'm doing here is abating the property that's a danger to our citizens.
Do we have something in place now to force them to pay the city back as far as cost? If they can't afford to clean it up now, what makes us think, now that we get it done, we can get even more money coming in?
It can be added to the taxes. And basically, the answer is?
City taxes? We don't include city taxes.
That's true. Well, we can't, but there will be, I guess it won't be add to property taxes, it'll just be charge accepted. That's a lien against the property. And the practical answer is, we probably, for a lot of these properties, we probably can't expect payment until the property is sold, because they're not gonna pay. They wouldn't pay the taxes, they're not gonna pay that, they're not gonna pay to keep it up. But the goal is to clean it up.
So we can stop them from building anything on it until the taxes are paid?
Stop them from selling.
We cleaned it up for them, they're gonna turn around and build a nice house.
While they build a nice house, they're gonna take our money to do it. There's gonna be a prior lien against it, and the lender will make them pay it.
And then a lot of these properties, they've moved, or they're deceased, or?
Well, a lot of these properties, you don't know who are the owners of.
Yeah.
And we're talking about the ones that it's an emergency. Not all dirt, but properties are gonna fall under this. And the procedure we have set up right now, or what's set up in the ordinance that we have right now, is for the code enforcement officer to bring these properties to the public safety committee. It was part of the fire committee's duties, but now just give them more. And just sort of have the public safety committee make a determination that if there is an emergency and that there would be an abatement, and the board are debating. And that can be done quickly. But again, we have to make the determination of what an emergency is.
So that this will be under the, sort of, the direction of the property maintenance?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, that's why I was just curious, like, who's sort of gonna be guiding this and making it?
The code enforcement, code enforcement officer. And actually, the public service or the public safety committee acts as the building commissioner. We've had, we've done it several different ways. We've had the fire chief act as the building commissioner before. We moved it to the fire committee, and since there is no more fire committee, public safety committee is taking over all responsibilities of the fire committee.
As far as the plan, I guess volunteers, that's willing to help too, and help across the city. The kind of guide operations.
Do you need a motion?
Do you need a motion?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Can we spend that fifty thousand on budget?
It's gonna take a few weeks.
Yes. No, I don't think we can. I think we need to, if it's not budgeted, unless it, again, if you determine that it is an emergency to, and that exigent circumstances exist, that you can go ahead and spend the money. The council can make that determination.
To help that case out, Victor and I have went around these properties, and literally any kid can get in the thing, and it will, good chance it's gonna fall on the kid. And you know kids are curious. And there's a lot of growing properties and snakes and everything, you don't wanna live beside.
I'm all for it. I mean, 100%, I just wanna make sure we don't.
And I think the proper way to do, one would be to authorize it, and two, then have another motion and make the determination that exigent circumstances exist, that we don't have to wait until the next meeting. Since this is an unbudgeted item, what we're, $1,000.
Victor, do you have anything else to add to it?
Are we gonna be able to?
I mean, we're gonna have more of a detailed meeting coming up, but I mean, anything on this subject?
Are we gonna be able to move that quick, within two weeks? I mean, get the equipment? If it's in, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, the equipment, that's, that I don't know. But I, legally, as far as the procedure goes, yes. If it's an emergency.
I would like to have the approval from the council strictly to inform the utility to get the services cut back. Because if I don't have it back in the council, I'm gonna have a hard time getting people to act outside of this scope. You know, I mean, the utilities and?
The motion stands right now, just to approve the project, which includes a fifty thousand, right?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a mere authorization for that?
No, let's do, yeah.
And there's your second?
Second.
We have a second. Any more discussion?
I have one question. Do we need to have a public safety committee meeting then to see the property, have Victor show us the property and vote to do this? We need to explain, we need to have a public safety committee meeting soon?
Yes.
Based off the code enforcement officer and myself, go and look at the property's situation there. Any more discussion?
Do we have enough properties targeted for rent equipment? We have a timeframe. We got enough properties to utilize that equipment?
I've got a list of 50 properties. Now, a small amount of those are not emergency properties, but more than the majority are wide open to the public and in very poor condition.
Well, not only poor condition, horrible condition, where they're not only uninhabitable, they're, they can't be prepared to make them habitable.
And that's not all the properties. That's just the first chunk.
Worst of the worst.
Worst of the worst.
We found shake, bake, melt products and all that.
We walked in one of the day, and there's been some extra activities going on at that property. It's wide open, roof, well, it's just, you would not live beside it. You would be up here every Tuesday, every Tuesday night, rapping out to take care of the problem. So I'm asking that we take care of it. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. What other vote do we need to pay?
The vote that exigent circumstances exist to authorize the money, authorize the money at this meeting without waiting for another meeting.
Stand up.
We have motions. We have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All in our shits, this is our thank you. Please make it clear. Honestly, it's terrible. Terrible. All right, folks. That's my report. City council committee reports. I know Mr. Weatherwicks and you have none.
I would like to make a request to approve $10,000 for the chamber of commerce for the roof. We don't have the bids or anything in all the bids yet, but it'll be three weeks before the next city council meeting, and the chamber of commerce needs a new roof in a real bad way.
You're asking for up to $10,000?
Yes, up to $10,000.
The chamber of commerce is a city-owned building. They notified the city hall the day that they had a hole in the roof. I believe you've had some folks come by to look at it.
Yes. I've contacted several people who go by there and can get bids. I don't have all the bids yet, so we can't really do that now. But I was gonna have a building committee meeting next week and go with the lost bid.
What is that?
It needs a new roof. The roof needs to be taken off, new roof put on, and several pieces of?
The decking?
Yeah, the decking replaced.
So we own this building and we lease it to the title of the room?
They use the building. Who owns the land? I don't know. Like, we've talked, we discussed this in the past. We paid this, the utilities were paid. It's like a city building.
If we abandon, no, if you abandon that property, it goes back to American土地.
Okay. I was gonna say, I thought the city owned that little part, and then the rest of it was the legend.
I believe, somewhere in the fine, wall print, that's what would happen way down the road.
I don't know. I've never been occasioned to look at it. That's how long ago.
Dolphrey Sr. was involved in all that tough question. Was very, very much involved in getting it built and probably providing a lot of the funding or material for it. But I think it was still the way that if it's abandoned for any reason, it probably would become the home office of the American土地.
I'm fervor of it.
Or it could be fervor of it, yeah.
So they don't have any money to put toward it? I mean, any lodges or anything?
No, I was just contacted and said I get some, take care of this. And so I started getting bids, and I'm supposed to fix some more bids up tomorrow. I don't know who's got the money, and who doesn't have the money.
Where can the money come from?
Capital improvement?
Capital improvement. If we don't fix it, it's just gonna get worse, and it's gonna cost more money.
You know, even though they use a building and don't, they don't pay anything, do they?
We pay them to be.
It's like I could throw in a little bit, you know, to help out.
Well, we pay them to be there.
That's true.
All I know is the roof needs to be replaced, and I was nominating for a street replacement.
We didn't tourist tax, man.
No. Oh, we did. Yeah, yeah.
Regardless, we'll need to have the roof fixed, or it's gonna get worse.
Yes. Apparently, it's been leaked at one time.
I would say then if, if actually it appears that it might ought to be, well, it's maintenance, but it might ought to be coming from general revenue. Counselor, what do you say?
It can be capital improvement.
It's improvements.
Because it is maintenance, so it's capital improvement.
There was one, something else you said, though. I forgot one of those.
It doesn't need to come from general revenue.
Lost my train of thought, though, about you. Anyway, I agree. I'd make a lot of support, you know, all roads up to $10,000.
Thank you.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Anything else for your committee?
Building committee? I don't think so on building committee. Human resource committee, coming up with a plan for the time off, earned time off, personal time off, vacation, sick time. And I'll come up with something, get it to the committee, and get it emailed out.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Any other, public safety?
I've admitted that since the last meeting that Deputy Director Mola is gonna have some recommendations for hiring, and the committee supports his recommendations, so he'll look very nice to the floor council.
Street?
I had talked to Mr. Carter last Wednesday, the list of potholes and stuff like that that need to be taken care of. I haven't talked to him in the past couple of days, but I know none of that's still been taken care of. Which I know he's out of town now, and it did rain.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This, this comes from our ward, but it has to do with streets. So I have been requested. So I have been requested that this is South Jackson Extended, which we also have been told is a corridor for Highway 412. And then I also have a picture of Garland...